Okay, so it says you're live on YouTube.
Hey, thank you. So welcome everyone to our regular meeting of council, which is being livestreamed electronically. This is January the 19th at 6:02. So I want to welcome all of the public who may be watching and listening, and also to all our staff who are with us and our council. So welcome to everyone. We're now going to have a moment of silence, but I'd like to draw your attention to two people who have passed away recently. The first person was a fine young man at the age of 17, whose name was Zachary Craig. Zachary has family members living in Montague. And we would like to send our condolences out to his family and his friends. So we'll remember Zachary in our moment of silence. And I'd also like to draw your attention, I'm sure some of you have heard of this, this person, but to the unexpected passing of the Carlton Place Counselor Teresa Fritz. Our sincere condolences also go out to her family and all who mourn her loss. She was very involved in politics, but more than that, she was extremely involved in volunteerism. I have worked with her over the years on the Police Services Board, and she will be sadly missed by her community. So if we can remember Zachary and Teresa in her moment of silence, please. Thank you, everyone. We're now going to go to our first motion, which I have here, moved by Claus Vandermeer, and seconded by Ian Straight, that council agreed to move items 8Q and O from information item to action item for discussion. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. We also have a motion moved by Karen Jennings and seconded by Jeff Carroll that the regular meeting of council agenda dated January the 19th, 2021 be approved as circulated. All in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. I will also remind all of council that if you have any disclosure of interest, you may declare it now or anytime during the meeting. And moving on, we have a motion moved by Ian Straight, seconded by Claus Vandermeer, that the minutes of the regular meeting of December the 15th, 2020 be approved as circulated. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. And I will ask if there's any business arising from those minutes? Yes, Jeff?
I can't remember if it was this or it was the cow we talked about, but it was just about because of the office and the closures of the office. And we talked about obviously delaying the garbage tags and the dog tags. So I'm just wondering, just to bring that back up again real quick, if we want to maybe extend that back out to first of March, at least until we can kind of have a couple of meetings in February to figure out where things are going as far as that goes.
So Jeff, I'm going to go to Joanna for a sec. Joanna, I think you had mentioned to me that that was going to come up somewhere in one of our meetings tonight, at least the garbage tags.
I was thinking about putting on the next agenda, but it probably makes sense to discuss it now, just because the next agenda is, I believe, February. Can you see here, February 2nd?
That's a good suggestion, Jeff, but I'm just wondering, Joanna, do we need just staff direction here, or do we need a motion?
I think it wouldn't hurt to have a motion.
So Jeff, if you want to put a motion on the floor, we'll get a second, and then we can discuss it and vote on it.
Yeah, sure. I mean, I guess with the motion that to continue the delay of the, you know, of the garbage tags and keep the three bag rule and the and the need for purchasing dog tags until March 1st. And to see where, you know, I guess that would be the motion.
Okay, and Claus?
I'll second that motion, Reeve.
Do we have any further discussion on this? All in favor? That is approved unanimously then. Thank you, Jeff. So I guess you can just write that up, Joanna, please, and then I'll sign that later.
Yeah.
So you got it? It was moved by Jeff and seconded by Claus?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Any other business arising from those minutes? I have one question, I think. It's just a question for now. In those minutes, it would be under two. That was regarding the delegation from the Perth and Smith Falls District Hospital for their 2021 funding request. We had asked, council had requested additional information to review in order to make that decision. And we did receive that information. So thank you to the staff for that. I guess my question is simple now. Do we, is this, does this now simply go to our next meeting when we're discussing the 2021 budget? Yes, that's the next time this, that's the next time this will come up? So I'm, I'm hoping that all of council will review that requested information. And then we can discuss it when we're talking about the budget, if that's okay. Claus, you have a question?
Yeah, I agree. We should discuss that in the next budget round. I've read through it. So maybe we just get a consensus from everybody that'll be brought up at the budget meeting.
Well, I think it will be automatically anyways. I don't think we need, yeah, thank you. But I don't think we need to consensus. It'll, it will come up. It is a budget item. It was a request. It is a budget item, so it'll come up.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for that, Jeff. Any other business arising from those minutes? Okay, if not, then we're going to move forward. We have no delegations tonight, and I know that Andrew is with us. And Andrew Hodge, our treasurer, is going to bring us the first report of our municipal officers. And that report is going to be on the water and wastewater long range financial plan. So I'm going to turn this part over to you, Andrew.
Good evening, Reeve Dobson, and members of council. Is my volume at a good level for you tonight?
Yep. Yeah.
So this is the report on the water and wastewater long range financial plan. And I'm bringing it to this council meeting tonight. And last meeting, it was at the Committee of the Whole, and this is bringing back the same information. And the reason for that is so that it can be passed by resolution at this meeting tonight. And then that council resolution can be used to submit before the end of month of January to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing and the Ministry of Environment by Miles, so that he can renew our water license for the next five years. So what you have here is a repeat of the last meeting, but presented so a resolution can be passed.
Okay, any discussion, any comments, questions? If not, then seeing none, Andrew, I'm going to read the motion. Okay. So this motion was moved by Jeff Carroll and seconded by Karen Jennings, that council receive the following report, that being the water and wastewater long range financial plan, and that the following be approved. Whereas one of the requirements of O Regulation 453-07 is the presentation and submission of a financial plan for the drinking water system. Now, therefore, the Council of Montague enacts as follows, that the township of Montague Water and Wastewater Financial Plan, prepared by BMA Management for the years 2021 to 2030, dated November the 2020, be approved, and notice of availability of the financial plan be advertised, and the financial plan and council resolution approving the financial plan be submitted to the Ministry of Environment, satisfying the requirements under the Safe Drinking Water Act, SDWA Section 32-5211. Any discussion then? All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Thank you, Andrew. And moving on, we have no reports of committees, no petitions. We have bylaws. And the first bylaw was moved by Ian Straight, seconded by Claus Vandermeer, the bylaw 3806-2021, being a bylaw to adopt the township of Montague Personnel Policy. Be read a first, second, and third time, be read a first, second, and third time, and passed, signed, and sealed this 19th day of January 2021. All in favor?
Question?
Yes.
There's just a couple typos in it, so it's just minor procedure to get the typo fixed, but I do approve the bylaw.
Yes, let's see now if I can find them there. Do you want to just point them out there?
So under, under 11B, it says, when applicable, full-time vacation pay shall be calculated at the appropriate percentage, but it's actually part-time that's calculated at a percentage. So it's just the small word that said full versus part-time.
Okay.
So it's just a minor, because when you look at your chart, you see that the full-time are in days, and it's part-time that has percentage. So it's just minor procedural fix, but the bylaw, I have no problem with it. So it's just minor.
Thank you.
So can we, we'll give direction to.
Did you get that? Yeah. To Joanna, did you get that, Joanna?
Yes, I've, I've seen an email, so, yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Anything else, Karen? Okay, thank you all in favor of this bylaw?
Well, I had one, one more, though. When we had a discussion.
Yes, yeah.
When we had a discussion in one of the other meetings with reference to vacation credits being carried forward, and then staff were going to be paid out, we made reference to the fact that they would be paid out at the rate it was accrued, and that, that little wording is also missing.
Okay.
It says E, an employee. It's number E, and it just makes reference to that. They can carry it over, and it should be used within the first six months of the year, but it would be paid at the year, at the rate that it was accrued. That was the only thing that was missed in that typing.
Okay, thank you. So if those changes are fine with council, then, and Joanna, did you get that second one also? Okay, so then council is aware of it, and if that's everything, then we'll vote on this bylaw. Thank you, Karen. All in favor? Okay, thank you. The next bylaw was moved by Karen Jennings and seconded by Jeff Carroll, that bylaw 3807-2021 being a bylaw to authorize the borrowing of money to meet current expenditures for the year. Be read a first, second, and third time and pass, signed, and sealed this 19th day of January 2021. All in favor? That's carried, thank you. And the next bylaw was moved by Ian Straight and seconded by Claus Vandermeer, the bylaw 3803-2021 being a bylaw to establish the calculation and collection procedures to be implemented for the interim tax billing process. Be read a first, second, and third time and pass, signed, and sealed this 19th day of January 2021. Any discussion? Jeff?
Just real quick, I think this might be a kind of appropriate time to bring it up. Just about the Montague Messenger that kind of goes out with the tax bill. I'd like to propose us to bring that to the next meeting, so we can kind of go through it real quick as a group to make sure that's the message that we want to go out with our, we had talked about it in the past. And I'd also like to make sure, I'd like to add something about the recreation feasibility study in that Montague Messenger. I just kind of like pointing it out for people that it's coming and, you know, so to keep their eye out for it, so they, you know, we want as much participation as much as possible. So I'm gonna, to kind of tag along with the interim tax bill, I guess, and it's gonna go out. Is, the group is game for, A, let's have a look at it before it goes out, and make sure if we want to make any changes to it, this is the time to do it. I've been told by staff that we have until the middle of February, so if we discuss it in the next meeting, we can do that, and, and have it, everything we want, maybe that's maybe missing in there. And also the rep, so I don't know if that's a motion, or if that's just a direction to bring it for the next meeting, if everybody's.
So I guess, I guess I'll, I'll mention, I'll just say that to Jeff and to all of council and Joanna, that the question there would be, which is more efficient for us to do what Jeff is suggesting, or for us to receive a draft before the meeting and have some some avail, some chance to make changes or additions? Jeff, and then Claus. Jeff?
I was gonna say, like, if it's on the next meeting, it'll be in the agenda, so it gives us that, that time over the weekend, and obviously a couple of days before the meeting, to sort of make our notes, to make our sort of our points. And so we would have a draft if it's in the next meeting per se.
Yeah.
To, you know, to go through.
I just wasn't sure whether it would be better to even have it before the, before the agenda goes out.
I think earlier. Yeah.
Um, Claus?
I agree with Counselor Carroll to have, have it, but I would like to see, I'd like to have it earlier than the agenda time, because sometimes the agenda doesn't come to us till Friday, and if something goes on on Saturday or whatever, I wouldn't have a chance to read through it. And if you're going to include the feasibility study in with it, there's quite a bit of reading in there. I wouldn't mind having it before we get the agenda.
Not, sorry, Reeve?
Yes, Jeff?
Not the feasibility study, like, not, not the like, the survey and all that kind of stuff in there, because that, that's going to be done digitally mostly, except that some requires a paper copy. It's just to inform people to be looking for it, because, I mean, if you're not on social media, if you're not on our Facebook page, you may not see it pop up, but at least it might, people might go, oh, that's something I might want to, I want to participate in, so I will keep my eye out for it. It's just, it's just a reminder that that's what's coming.
Yeah, I, I understand. I think that's good. Joanna, did you want to make any comment on this, Joanna?
Um, well, I just want to be sure. I mean, staff sort of have to have it in by the middle of February, so they'd need your okay before that. I'm not sure what other parties need to get information into it, or what needs to be changed or whatnot. So we want to give everybody time to get everything, you know, submitted before you guys have a chance to look at it. So I, you know, I don't think we can do it a whole lot earlier than the next, the next agenda, but I can talk to staff, but we can certainly try to send, send something up before the next agenda. I just won't guarantee it.
So then, then that means we'll just leave it that if you can find, if not, it'll be in the agenda. Is that fine with everybody?
That's fine.
Okay, thank you. I'm going back to the motion, sorry, to the bylaw, and I did read it. So if there's nothing else, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Now, we're moving on. To, there are no motions and no notices of motions, and under the correspondence, we have no action items, however, the correspondence, we move forward, and that being 8Q and 80. So who brought 8Q forward?
Karen.
Hold on one second.
Oh, did we have, yeah, first, I'll go to you, Karen, but Jeff, do you have a question?
Just, should we be approving the cow or no?
We missed that.
It should be, we should have, we should have approved that, I think, back when we were doing the reports of committees.
Yeah, so did that one get in, maybe the whole? Joanna, is that the one that got into the committee of the whole?
I believe that's the one that got in the committee of the whole, yeah.
Okay, so it's just in the wrong meeting there, Jeff, so I'm going to pull that out. And thank you for that. So that motion was moved by Ian Straight and seconded by Claus Vandermeer, that council approved the minutes of the meeting, of committee of the whole meeting of December the 15th, 2020, and approved the recommendations contained within. All in favor? And, yep, okay, thank you. That's carried. Thanks, Jeff. And then we're going to go to, I think it was Karen, you moved HQ, oh, yep.
Yes, I'd like to have council put a resolution forward that we support the resolution from the town of Plinton, Wyoming, for funding for community groups and service clubs that have also been affected by the pandemic. Because of the fact that they aren't able to do their normal fundraising and their activities to keep their clubs functioning. The Legions were successful in lobbying to get funds, and so this municipality is bringing it forward to the various municipalities in Ontario, and I would like to have our council support it, and also then send it off the same to all the, to AMO, to all the Ontario municipalities. It's got the Prime Minister, it's got the Premier of Ontario as well. And I'd also like it sent off to our own MP and MPP. And if I could get support for that, please.
Okay, do we have a second there? We do, Claus? Now, do you have specific, just as a matter of interest, clubs in Montague?
Our website says we have two.
Yes, good. Okay, perfect. I was just want to, I want to make sure, I just wanted to make sure that it was two. Thank you. So all in favor? That's carried. Thank you, Karen, for that. And 80.
Yes.
Who moved that forward?
Karen.
Yes, Karen.
So it's a resolution from the Corporation of the Township of Manitowashun. I'm not sure if I'm saying that right, but anyway. And it's in reference to grants that become available, and the fact that there's very tight turnaround time to do the applications. And for small municipalities with few employees, that turnaround time, it makes it very restrictive for them to make their applications. So this municipality is asking for extended deadlines, longer, or a further grant, longer turnaround times. And I know that that's probably something that impacts us as well, since we are a small municipality. So I would like to put a resolution forward to support this resolution, so all small municipalities get an equal shot, the same as the larger ones.
Great. Do we have a second for this? Jeff? So it was moved by Karen and seconded by Jeff. Any other further discussion? Jeff?
Thanks, Karen, for bringing that up, because it's, it's a huge one. We've already seen it a little bit already, where we've seen grant ones come up, and we're trying to see how we can maybe go after it. And we don't have, small municipalities don't have people that are specifically just for grants, so it's a I'm, you know, I just, I totally agree, and it's, and thanks for bringing it up.
Okay, any other discussion then? All in favor? That is carried. We going too fast here there, Joanna, yet? Okay, then thank you for those. Thank you. Okay, then moving forward, that's.
Oh, what? Sorry? I'm not, just maybe just to note, number R, the money that we received for COVID funding, a little bit more money?
Yes.
That's great.
Yes, news.
Okay. Yes, Jeff?
I forgot, yeah, there's another good one for Karen. Where's that gonna go right now? I mean, Andrew's in the line, but is that something that just goes into or what reserve would that go into? Like, right now, do we have a COVID reserve? We don't?
We have probably a revenue account.
Did you hear, did you hear that, Andrew?
Yes. When we reconcile the year-end for 2020, if there's any of the original amount left, it would go into a COVID reserve. And like Counselor Jennings said, the new amount, which we have already received in January, it's in the bank now. It will be shown as revenue, but then if it, if it doesn't have us, if it's needed for COVID items, it's there, and if not, it would also go towards a COVID reserve at some point. But there's a possibility that it will be used in 2021 prior to that.
It'll.
Yes, Jeff?
Will be part of the budget? Really, because it's a revenue, so, is it, does it show up on the budget as a revenue?
Well, we should. We could ship it there, so we can manage it. And then it could, it could be transferred, serve in the budget as well, so it's set aside. That's the option, too, that we could use.
I would think you would want to be in the budgetary, sort of, if that's what we're going to discuss it, like, go and have it there for COVID expenses, but I would think we'd want to have it as a, as a revenue for, in our budget.
Yeah, versus an unknown, so we can, we can look at everything as a big picture.
Is it good for anybody else, or?
I think it's fine. Fine with me.
It has to be in the budget somewhere, so. There's money coming in, which is a revenue, it's just, oh. It should be, yeah.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to go to Claus, you have your hand up?
Yeah, thank you, Reeve. Andrew, just give an example, like, a COVID expense, like, it would be lack of us collecting interest on taxes?
That's, yeah, that's the way we've been managing it for 2020, so we do it similar again.
Okay. Yeah, that is true, go to the budgets, money in, money out. Okay, thank you.
Okay, then we're moving forward. I believe then that's all of the that's all of the correspondence. Now, I'm missing, I think I'm missing one page here. But I'm just wondering, do, is this where we go to any questions from the public before we recess? Because we will be reconvening, but I think Joanna or Christie, if we can ask you if, any questions?
I have, hi, I have no questions that I have here.
Okay. Okay, if there are no questions, then we're going to, I do have a motion here to recess as we will be going in camera later. But this motion was moved by Jeff Carroll and seconded by Karen Jennings, that council recess at 6:31 PM. All in favor? That is carried. And we're going to then take a recess so that we can change over everything to our committee of the whole meeting. And we'll take three or four minutes. And so, Joanna, I think now, in the past, are you able to just mute everybody for?
I can.
Okay. All right. All right.
Hey Joanna, does Carl know that we're done a little earlier than usual?
Yes, he does. I just text him, he's in the waiting room.
Super. That was a quick one for us, so it's.
He made me give a guesstimate. I said, it looks pretty short, we'll go with 6:30. So I was pretty close.
Oh, you're bang on. That's good, that's good, yeah.
Anybody, did anybody bring him a coffee in the waiting room?
Get over this waiting room.
This is a new one I made, this waiting room thing. How come everybody's picture got a lot smaller all of a sudden?
There's more people.
More people, I guess so. Well, they were on there before. Hmm, well.
Who's all glad hockey's back on?
Not me.
Fantastic.
Fantastic.
Fantastic. I've watched some relief games so far, I'm sure Carl has too. Enjoy it. That's good. That's awesome.
That's unbelievable.
Please get smirder, smirder every day.
Oh, there's.
Pardon me, I'm just trying to, Ivan, you set up here and I'm just trying to see if I can zoom out on this webcam.
You're muted though.
Are we live, Joanna?
We never left.
Okay. I wasn't sure. I'm just waiting on you Carl, let me, let me know you're ready. Are you with us, Carl? Hello, Carl?
Hello, sorry about that.
Okay, everything's ready, Carl?
I am.
Okay. So welcome everyone then to our committee of the whole meeting. Again, it's live streamed electronically. January the 19th. So welcome to everyone who is watching, our staff and our council. And to you Carl for coming. We're going to go ahead and get started then with our first motion. And that was moved by Claus Vandemir and seconded by Ian Straight. That the committee of the whole agenda dated January the 19th, 2021 be approved. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. I will also remind all of council, if you have any disclosure of interest, you can declare it now or anytime during the meeting. We have no delegations tonight, so we're going to go straight into our first report of our municipal officer. And we have with us tonight, our planner, Carol Dranke. And that is, the first report is on the four Wellington zoning bylaw amendment. So Carl, I'll hand this over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. So I'm just bringing council up to speed on a zoning amendment application that, that we considered in December, the last meeting of, of the new year and, or sorry, the last meeting of, of the old year. And the applicant is also here this evening too, in case there's any questions. So I'll, I'll keep this, I'll keep this fairly brief, but as council will recall, we hosted a public meeting to consider a zoning amendment application for property described as four Wellington Street. So that's that's an industrial property located at the south end of Harper Conde Road. So the property has light industrial special exception zoning currently, and the special exception limits the, the range of uses on the property. So our zoning bylaw doesn't actually allow for accessory retail uses within an industrial zone. So that's, so in this case, in 2019, council approved a site plan application to accommodate the redevelopment of the site to, to incorporate a cannabis cultivation facility. So that meets the zoning. We approved the site plan. The site plan prescribed certain certain landscaping buffering screening requirements that have been, that have been implemented. So at this point, right now, the, the property owner is looking to expand the, or I guess expand the business operation within the existing building to accommodate a small retail outlet. So he's looking at roughly roughly 300 square feet on the property. So since accessory retail isn't accommodated within the current zoning, we've had to consider a zoning amendment to allow this as an additional permitted use. So just quickly to go through, through the policies, the official plan designates the subject property as rural. And the rural designation allows a whole range of, of uses, so long as they, so long as they're broadly consistent with the with the intent and the landscape character of the area. So the OP also prescribed some evaluation criteria that we need to look at when we're considering new commercial uses within, within a rural property. So those have been, been summarized in the, in the report. And I think it's important to note that the, the existing industrial zoning, the existing industrial use, that's what's that's certainly the, the largest overall feature of, of the landscape there. So adding an additional retail component within the existing building is going to have very minor additional impacts on, on the community. I think the key thing that may be of interest is some additional traffic. So we're expecting, of course, that there's going to be some additional public traffic, public access to the site. The, the property is, unfortunately, it's not, it's not conveniently located on a high traffic road. There is there will need to be some transportation through some, through some more local streets to access the site. And as such, I think it's important that, that the retail use be that the retail use be properly scaled. So we not, we, so while a small, say a 300 or so square foot retail use there is probably going to generate limited traffic, have a limited impact on the neighborhood. The reality is of much larger commercial use. And the site probably wouldn't, probably wouldn't be appropriate. So one way in which we can and one way in which we can manage potential impact is through, through site specific zoning. Obviously, we can't regulate the amount of traffic that's being used on the site, but we can, we can manage the overall size and scale of, of the commercial use. So one, one option that's available to council, which staff recommend is is limiting the, the size of the commercial use to something that's a little bit above what, what the proponent is is looking for. And that's going to give him the flexibility to run the commercial, the commercial business on, on the property. But manage the scale so that it doesn't become something larger that may have unintended impacts much later, much later in the further down, or if the property were to be sold. And, and a new retail and a future property owner were to come in later on with, with a larger with a larger development. So I think in this case, we have worked with, with the Public Works Department on, on this proposal. Public Works has advised they don't object to, to the zoning amendment, they don't object to the retail use. However, they are, they do have a keen interest on, on traffic flow in that area. It is a, there are a lot of curves to the street. So we did work, work out some details. The proponent was very helpful in, in providing information about how how traffic flow circulates on, on the site and what's being what's generally being intended here is, is that vehicles would enter the southern, the south entry point at Wellington and exit on the north entry point on, on Harper Conde. And and that was, that was supported by, by the Public Works Department. And the Public Works has suggested that signage be put in place to to, to further administer this. And the, the proponent has, Mr. Bruin Delray has advised that he's, he's amenable to, to that. So the, the change, the normally that would be dealt with through a site plan process, but in this case, we're, we're looking at a renovation within the existing complex. So there's no no trigger for, for a site plan. So I think in, in my opinion, the application that's been presented to us is, does comply with the intent of, of the official plan and, and the provincial policy statement. So we recommend that the application be approved. We recommend that the approval limit the, the floor space of the retail use to 30 square meters and clarify that the retail use is accessory to the industrial product made on on the site. So I'll confirm as well licensing provisions for the cultivation facility and the retail are the responsibility of the appropriate federal and provincial authorities. So at this point, council's question is, is whether simply about land use and whether retail land use is appropriate at the location. So we can't, in terms of the, the form of, of retail, in, in this case, whether it's cannabis or whether it's the retail of any other product that's being produced on the site, that would be, it would be treated in the same through, through zoning. We wouldn't be treating cannabis retail any different from any other sort of, any other sort of retail. So that's why the, the proposed policy speaks broadly to to, to retail. So I think with, I'll, I'll pause there and certainly I'll welcome any questions from from council. And if council supports the application, then we can bring forward a bylaw at the next, next available meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. I'll open it up to council if you have any questions, comments. Jeff?
So, so part of that is that the only thing that can be sold in the retail store is what's from that facility? So like, I mean, obviously with, with this product, there's, there's other things that you use, you know, to smoke or whatever like that. So those kind of things, can they not be sold then at the, there? Like if they wanted to do like rolling papers or pipes? Or is it just the product?
Carl?
Excellent question, Counselor. I think I'll, I'll take council's direction on this, but I, I think it's reasonable that some accessory product that's related directly to, I, I don't think it, it would become very difficult to enforce. And I don't think really we want to enforce and verify that every single item within that store is, is made on that site. I think some element of, of accessory accessories to, to the primary product would, I think would be, would be reasonable. I'll defer to, to the applicant if he'd like to, if, with, with the permission of the chair, if, if the applicant would like to provide any further context on, on his plans.
Yes, I will go to you, Mr. Bruin Delay.
Hello. Yes. The, the accessories is a good point. I didn't really think of that, but it would be nice to have for the papers or what?
We're not hearing you very clearly.
I guess the accessories would be nice to be able to sell it, but nothing beyond, beyond that.
So I guess I'm going to go back to you, Carl. Do we need to specify that then in the bylaw?
If council is comfortable with that, then I'll, I'll work on, on the wording accordingly and, and bring that back to, to council for next, next meeting.
Okay, I'm good. I'm going to go to two people, Jeff first and then to Claus. Jeff? Jeff?
All right. I was just gonna say like, I, I, because I agree with that side of it. I mean, like it's a, and, and more what the proponent wants to do. I mean, I would like to think that obviously the accessories would be something that we'd want to add if, if we go ahead and approve this, because I mean, we had something that goes along with those kind of shops. But I guess the, the side of it would be that the actual product itself, like if he wanted to sell, I don't know, like for now, he's got a good partnership with another, another grower and they wanted to, to sell each other's products. Would we not allow that then? Or is that and, and under this sort of provision?
Yeah, you're, you're also cutting out a little bit, Jeff. So there was a couple of things there I didn't quite get, but Carl, do you want to respond to that first?
So I, I think when we're looking at accessory, at, at accessory retail, the, the key point of that is, is the idea that we're selling something that's being made on the site. If it's, if it's just general retail, then that's, it's sort of, it, it's a different length, it's a a bit of a different land use. So that being said, I don't think it necess, it, it makes sense that there's a little bit of flexibility there and, and certainly we can I can look at the wording if council's comfortable. I can look at the wording and maybe speak, say predominantly that that's produced on the site or, or something of that nature to give give the applicant a little bit of flexibility, but clarify that the intent of this is, is to link the, the retail with, with the main production. Give the applicant a little bit of flexibility, but clarify that the intent of this is is to link the the retail with with the main production use.
Okay, thanks. Follow up, Jeff?
Yeah, as my last follow, because I I I like the idea, and it's just more of a like sort of a business sense is is, I mean, obviously, like, the reason why I'm assuming. Brun Del Ray wants to open up the the places to sell the product that he's that he's doing. But sort of in our in our, you know, in our sort of free market society that we want to have, where I I want to make sure that he has the opportunity to make sure that that he can be successful and. And there's a partnership that helps with that, you know, in the future for him. That's good. I just want to make sure that it gives him the opportunities to be successful and have the right products when he's going to do this, so.
Okay. Okay, thanks. Claus?
Thanks, Reeve. Carl, just a question in regards to the site plan specifications. Is there a time limit when those are to be done by?
I'd I'd have to, Mr. Chair, I'd need to. I'd need to review the the specific site plan provisions, but there isn't a. There isn't, in this case, there isn't a trigger for a new site plan agreements with if if he was building in addition to the site, if we're looking at expanding the building. Then we would need to enter into a new site plan agreement to to manage grading, landscaping. Some of those details, but in this case, we're we're dealing with the renovation within the existing within the existing building. So he's bound by the site plan agreement that council approved back in. In twenty nineteen, there wouldn't be a there's no trigger for a new site plan agreement through this through the zoning here.
Yes, Claus?
Yeah, follow up, Reeve. Thank you. In regards to Public Works, Public Works has been involved in this and had a look at the. Roads and the entrances and all that kind of stuff. Do they feel there's going to be any extra amount of work we're gonna have to do? With the traffic. I know traffic is impossible to tell what the traffic is going to be, but.
Yes, Carl?
So the sense I get in in discussion with the. With with Stephen is that the the development here, we're not looking at such a a large, we're not looking at a large impact that's going to create. Major impacts on the road. Public Works's main concerns are access and circulation around the facility and and Stephen, I'll I'll let. I'll let Stephen Phil expand upon that if with with the Reeves' permission, if he's if he can do so.
Yes, I'll pass it on to him.
Can you hear me clear?
Yes.
Yes, so my recommendation was basically that they access the site through Roger Stevens to. Harper Conde would be my recommendation out of the tight curvature, right, with the house right on the corner and everything. And then the entrance and exit is just kind of to control the vehicle flow. And it is a residential house right there at the entrance to the building. So my thinking was just the the ease of traffic would be best with the entrance and exit and then Harper Conde to Roger Stevens.
Good. Thank you. Thank you, Steve, for that. Any other comments then? I do have a motion. I'll read it. It was moved by Karen Jennings and seconded by Jeff Carroll. That the committee, the whole, received the following report. The for Wellington zoning bylaw. By our planner and that the following be recommended to council. That staff be directed to prepare an implementing bylaw. To amend the provisions of the light industrial special exception two. To allow a retail use that is accessory to a permitted industrial use. Subject to maximum flood space. Of thirty square meters. Three hundred and twenty square, three hundred and twenty-three square feet. No further comments. All in favor. And that is carried. Thank you. And also just want to say. To Mr. Brun Del Ray. To thank you for your continued collaboration and cooperation. With our staff. We appreciate that and we are excited and. And and wish you lots of success. So thank you very much.
Thank you as well.
Okay, then moving forward. Yes, Carl?
I'd just like to, if I may, I'd like to clarify council's council's concurrence that the zoning policy we bring forward is is going to accommodate the flexibility for. For associated for the retail. Of associated products as well.
I think so, and I know you're going to put the wording towards that.
Yes.
Okay.
I appreciate the point by councillor Carol on that. That was that was an excellent clarification.
Yeah, and Claus, did you have something to say there?
Yes, I wish to declare conflict of interest on item D, the road classification report. Which one? The next item coming up.
Okay.
Deals with the Lorne Street.
Um, the next one, the next, are you talking about the securities policy, the next one?
After Alan Maloney, the Public Works.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so that's.
Class six roadway.
Yeah, we're we're only we're we're just on B right now.
You're just on B?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
We just finished A, so now we're going to B.
I'm sorry I jumped too far.
That's okay.
I'll remind you again.
Okay, thank you. So Carl, you're still with us and the next report is on the securities policy.
Thanks, Mr. Reeve. So the second the second report is a little bit more administrative in nature, and I think the the conversation is being brought forward based on. I guess it's a product of of some of the increased growth and and development pressure we're seeing in in the township and and staff have. Over the last couple of months, staff have sort of been identifying areas where we can improve our administration, improve our processes, create more and. And ensure that as as we grow, as development happens, that we have a a consistent and and predictable framework for that. So I think there's been a lot of discussion around the council table lately about site plan enforcement and making sure that. And and sort of looking at the the nitty-gritty of of our site plan approvals, including including securities and and securities, of course, are a primary tool that. Municipalities use to ensure that that. That the works that developers agree to do are are completed to municipal satisfaction. And and many of these works are, of course, necessary for. For the safe function of the site to manage impacts on. On municipal infrastructure, on the environment, on on neighbors and and, of course, landscaping and those sort of aesthetic requirements. And and these are. These requirements are put in place based on our based on official plan requirements and and through. Through review. So I think that's why we we look at landscaping and and all of those those matters through through a site plan process. So typically, what happens then is is when the need for securities identified, the proponent agrees to provide the township a deposit. Which we hold until the work is completed. And then once that's once it's inspected and once we've okayed it, then the deposits return to to the proponent. So of course, the worst-case scenario is that we we use that that deposit to to do the work. That almost never happens. I I'm not sure that's. That's actually happened in my, at least in my. My experience, we work with we work with the folks to 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 make sure that that compliances is is achieved when we have securities to support a a site plan. So it's that's a pretty standard, pretty standard course of action in. In in my experience in in municipalities, I think just. Municipality, but they're actually very small for very small developments. So multi-plan improvements that have been approved in the township in recent years are small residential. Are small residential developments. I'll I'll pause. Oh, oh, can you can you hear me?
Where where you're you're just cutting in and out there now.
Yeah, I got I got a little note that my internet was unstable. So i- is there something I should be repeating?
No, I.
No, I think you're all right, Carl.
I think you're okay.
I'll I'll carry on. So I think in in this case, securities are administered through through the site plan approval, but. It it's not something that we've often done in Montague Township and certainly most of the smaller waterfront site plans that are. That have been whose approval has been delegated to staff. Those have not been, we haven't been collecting securities for for those. However, I know. Some rural municipalities who have waterfront property, they do collect.
Now you're cutting out.
To make sure that's more, but for for commercial.
Yeah, you're cutting out again there, Carl.
Can you can you hear me now?
Well, you've lost, say, just the last couple of sentences. No, we're not hearing. No.
Okay. I'm going to go to a I'm going to go to a different room and see if I have luck in a different room.
Okay.
I'll be, I'm gonna go closer to where the router is and see if I have luck there. I'll I'll be. Pardon me, I'll I'll be back and I'll be back in just a moment.
No problem. No problem. We'll wait.
Isn't this fun?
Maple Laps play tonight, Jeff?
Oh, the Maple Leafs are not.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
They played tomorrow night. They played tomorrow night. Okay, I don't I don't know who they play tomorrow, though. It's a very compressed schedule right now, so it's like there's a lot like the games are happening like there's like. How many Charles, it's been a weekend and they're already four games in, so it's been. It's a lot better, actually.
They they get to know their enemies, eh?
It's I I I'm excited for this 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 Canadian division. Like, it's it's, I think it's like for for to do this in this kind of anomaly year, I think this is going to be really cool. I think it's gonna get really neat when we get into. Game forty, when the when teams get start getting really testy with each other. So. I think this is every every night's like, oh, this is an exciting game. It's another Canadian game, so.
Okay, Carl?
All right, I think I'm closer to the source. Hopefully, this hopefully this works. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yep.
All right. Sorry, I apologize. Thank you for your, thank you for your patience there. I rural internet is rural internet can be a little touch and go.
Do you want to just back up to maybe two or three sentences? I think we might have missed the last two or three sentences of yours.
Certainly. So I think with the. So as far as 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 far as securities go, it's something that we haven't typically been taking them in the past for for small developments, the waterfront developments that. That constitute most of the site plan approvals we've we've done. And it just simply the rationale is that that's not a. We didn't, we're we're dealing with individual property owners here who are making significant and and costly investments. And we didn't. We didn't want to burden the individual, single-family homeowners, but some municipalities do to ensure that that important, the important work gets done. Securities are something that we have been for for new commercial or industrial site plan agreements we've been doing, say, within the last couple of years. It's something that we have been doing. But one thing that that staff have identified, certainly in 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 discussion with the. Following and accompanying with their site plan approval for for the Talis Homes, which is is definitely a larger, one of the larger projects that we've looked at in in recent years, is we've identified, I think, the value in having a. A consistent and predictable approach that that would guide staff in administering site plan agreements and and hopefully. Manage any conflicts that that may arise. So based on that, we're we're recommending the council directs us to prepare a securities policy that. Sets a bit of the groundwork for for what council, where council wants to see securities, how they're collected and and just generally administering them. And I think. The important thing to note is that this is something that. This is, this would be your document. It's it's up to you. There is no Planning Act requirement that says we need to do it a certain way. So this is, it's simply. It's simply an implementation tool that municipalities can can deal with on our own how we how we want to. So I've. Proposed a number of or outlined a number of, I guess, criteria or considerations for council. And I'll ask, I'll ask the Reeve if you'd like to. Would you like to go through each one individually, or do you want to go through all of them and?
No, I. No, I I think you can go through them individually, if that's fine with council. If there's no, there may be questions, so so I think we can go through them individually.
Okay. So I think also at this point, too, I'll I'll highlight that we don't necessarily have all all of the answers. We're we're proposing. This is an administrative step that we're proposing council, and and if we don't have the answer at this point, then then we'll we'll go get it. But I think the first question is, when do we when do we collect securities? So in my. My recommendation is is basically following status quo. We collect securities for all new commercial, industrial and institutional builds. But I also look for council's direction. Do you want to do you want to also collect securities for all site plan agreements? So including waterfront residential site plans. So grading and stormwater management would be pretty basic on those. However, landscaping and shoreline vegetation are are very important. So the report outlines the things that we we normally collect securities for, but I'll just confirm, I guess, when when council would like to, when council would like to to do this.
Carl, I have a question there, just regarding the site plan. For shoreline work. And. The. The Rideau Corridor Landscape Strategy. Also is involved in that type of thing. So how do the two of those work together? How would the two work together?
Excellent, excellent question, Mr. Chair. The the Rideau Corridor Landscape Strategy is. Essentially, it it's not a legally binding document, but it gives us some very, it it gives us some very helpful guidance in in administering. Site plan. So part of that is it identifies a number of habitat features, landscape characteristics, and including, say, our our rural shorelines and and part of. And and it supports, say, the retention of the retention or restoration of of native vegetation along along the shoreline. It discourages. Developments that, say, basically harden the harden the shoreline with concrete, concrete decks and docks and and those sorts of things that. That would potentially have a greater impact. So that's consistent with the with policies, the official plan that we already have with respect to to shoreline development. So it it supports. It supports what we look for now, which is if there's an opportunity to to obtain some shoreline planting, to reduce erosion, to protect fish habitat, then then we do that. So a lot of our shoreline site plans require people to to do that, and we work with them to to find a planting plan that makes sense and also allows for some shoreline access for a dock. I think. The the name of the game is is compromise and and we work, we work those details out with with the Rideau Valley Conservation Authority to find something that. That works. But in terms of shoreline plantings, those become requirements of the site plan approval. And and typically, we just. We we look for, we look for them to be completed and and administered through through the the building inspection process. So I'll I'll welcome council's feedback on on whether that's something we should be collecting securities for. Jim, I'm pretty extra sure.
Yeah, thank you, Carl. I'm going to go to Ian.
Carl, would it be easier just to put an upset limit on it, say, you know, ten thousand dollars or something like that? Anything that's above and beyond that would require a security? Or whatever that number might be at the end of the day?
Yes, Carl.
Yes, that's actually, that's a good, that's a good option. So that that that's certainly something that that we can pursue. So we can ask the proponent to provide, outline the value for all of these works. If it if it exceeds ten thousand dollars, then we collect securities. If it doesn't exceed ten thousand dollars, we we don't. That's. Definitely an approach that we can take if if council would like to to see that.
So I think. Yeah, you go ahead, Ian. Go go ahead, Ian.
No, I don't know. I think that's, I think.
Okay.
Works. I mean, it's a lot simpler than trying to list two or three different. You know, how many things do you list on there and then it's not on the list and then. You're caught in this this. Tug of war.
So I just, how how does council feel about the the ten thousand dollar amount? Is council okay with that?
That's a fair, it's a fair amount.
Let staff decide what that might be at the end of the day.
That's exactly, yeah.
Okay. So then if staff is going to, then will staff come back? Will will you come back to us, Carl, with this amount then, or what?
I can certainly, I'll come back if council would like. I can come back with the draft policy for council's review and and certainly we can we can take a number there. I think ultimately what we as staff were are going to be looking to do is is create a balance between. Getting the right. getting the right mechanism in place to make sure the important projects that need to be done are done, but also not overburdening the little guy and and being being a deterrent in in that way. So I think that's sort of where we have to carefully where we have to carefully find that that right balance. And certainly Joanna has experience with the experience with this as well. So I'm I'm pretty confident that we can we can hammer something out.
Really, like whatever amount we choose. If someone wants to just keep it under that amount, then that would mean they wouldn't have to put up securities, right? Okay, Jeff?
I was gonna say that we don't want to reinvent a wheel here. I mean, like, it's it's more just kind of stealing the best practices out of those other municipalities that are already doing this, that they have success with, and really to to organize our 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 system a little bit better. So it's very upfront with people because right now that's, I mean, we I've alluded to it last meeting with the last situation we had with the with someone trying to do some building in our township, and a little bit of it is because we don't have good processes in place. This is fixing. So I mean, it's more just where who's who's got the sort of the best ideas out there, Carl, that, you know, and who's good to model after when we're doing this, I think, is the is the bigger.
So do you have the direction you need then, Carl, from us for now?
Yes, I think so. I think I'm I'm looking at a, I think, a threshold councils interested in in rather than narrowing out the individual land uses, looking at a threshold as as a as a consistent framework. And I think Joanna had something wanted to add something as well.
Yes, Joanna.
Yes, sir. I want to stop on Carl's toes. I just I just want to be, I think. I like when you're looking at a large project, a large commercial project, we could be talking about something that's in like the hundreds of thousands of dollars. Um, that's, you know, so you'd be collecting security for, you know, three, five, six hundred thousand dollars on a big commercial project. Um, whereas, you know, if you're collecting something on the waterfront, you're really just looking to collect securities for, say, trees or shrubs or uh, other landscaping, maybe some patio stones or something. Um, so that's more like in thousand, two thousand dollar range. But the point is, you want to have enough money to be able to go in and do that work if you need to, or or, you know, to to return the funds when the work is done, to ensure that they get it done. So I think it's like Carl's trying to allude to, do you want to go ahead with the shoreline or not? They're kind of it's a securities policy, but there's two distinct things happening here. So I don't know if a threshold of 10,000 is you know, I hope that's the number, but it's something that staff can work out. I just want to be clear about that.
Yeah, and that'll come back to us then. Thanks, Joanna. Jeff?
I guess so. Back the releasing of the of the securities too, as well. Is that only when the job is done, or is there points along the way where like like, I think Joanna makes a great point with like, if we're taking a half a million dollars from somebody as a security, are we releasing it back when they're completing certain parts of it, so that kind of frees up some of that money for them to as well, or?
Yes, Carol.
My recommendation is that we we draft our policy to allow that sort of that sort of flexibility for for partial releases. I'm I'm comfortable with the with partial releases so long as we retain enough on hand to to make sure that the work gets that the work gets done. So and I'll just just as an example, for instance, if everything is done except for the planting of two trees, if we were to hold back the $400 that two trees would cost, then then chances are those two trees may never get may never get planted. So we want to retain, I guess, enough to make it to to incent them to to complete what they've agreed to do. But you're absolutely correct. We don't want to. I think we we have to be fair when we're looking at a huge at huge sums of huge sums of money. I think partial releases are are appropriate, and certainly we can that we can come back with. We can come back and and recommend an approach for for that. But I think site some case by case flexibility, I think, is is warranted.
So just to make sure that everybody is clear on this, Carl, if we chose, if you come back and give us, say, the threshold of $10,000, what happens if there's, say, you know, $6,000 worth of work, and it doesn't get done? Then what security do we have then?
If we don't, if there's a if there's a piece of work that that they've agreed to do, it doesn't get done, then and we don't have securities for that work, then there are site plan agreements I've worked with do have enforcement provisions in there that will usually give us some sort of leeway perhaps through the courts to try to complete the work and find a way to get that onto their tax bills. But that's a very, that's not a it's not an approach that I want to take. It's a lot. It's a lot harder, and and there's there's no guarantee of of success. That's something that's a step that the municipality would probably have to take very very sparingly because we likely want to go go the full distance. So securities are a way are a much simpler way to to manage that. So I think that's when we when we decide what what the threshold is, I think we have to keep that to keep that in mind that ultimately I don't want to spend a dime of those securities. I want to return them all back to the proponent, have the work complete and 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 everybody's everybody's happy. So we're we're going to have to look at that carefully when we do those thresholds.
Exactly. But if we if we if we don't, if we don't have a threshold, let's say the threshold is is 10,000. And because I suspect that there's lots of things done that's a lot less than 10,000. And obviously, you hope through the site plan that the tasks are completed to to the way there should the way they should be. But my concern would be that if there isn't enough security, then we're kind of leaving leaving ourselves wide open for 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 it not to be done. I'm going to go to, I think Jeff had his hand up, and then Karen.
And I I think I think our bigger issue is is some of the bigger projects and not these smaller projects. It's like the house being completed and finished and everything else. I guess that's my other question, Carl, is that is this this do we have to do any securities on on a new home build?
Yes, Carl.
Securities are only taken through a as part of a site plan process. So in this, at least the securities that we're we're discussing, if if the if there are additional, if there's anything through the building permit process, that would be be separate. So in 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 Montague Township, we only enter into a site plan agreement for single family homes if they have if they're on if they about the water. So if they're on a waterway or adjacent to canal, and the reason for that is that those areas have specific natural specific natural features and also the cultural heritage features being being next to UNESCO World Heritage Site that warrant that additional level of review. So individual homes anywhere else in the township, this doesn't apply. This only applies to waterfront homes where we already those are all written. We wouldn't be changing the policy here. They've already been subject to site plan approval. We've been we've done probably a couple dozen site plan approvals just at the staff end for for these smaller builds that have gone that have gone through quickly and and simply so that wouldn't change the threshold for when we'd be looking for site plan agreements. It's just that added administrative portion.
Okay, Karen?
Yes, so I I don't want to go the route where Carl had suggested that if it's under the 10,000, we don't have securities that we have to go to try and go to court and or put on taxes or anything else. So I'd much rather have where we start the securities as low as it has to and go right up straight through so that all properties are covered for whatever value it is than having to try and do administrative work with going to court or anything else. So the 10,000 maybe needs to be removed from the suggestion, and we go back to however staff can put it in there that we get securities on everything, and it doesn't matter how minor to how major.
Thank you, Karen. That that's why I mentioned it because because I I I think I have the same concerns as you do. Anybody else on this? Klaus?
Thank you, Reeve. Just to continue on Councilor Jennings' point there, I agree, there should be securities on no matter what the size of the project. Could we use a percentage figure? A 10% security deposit based on the value of the project?
Why not just put this put this security on and and have it done? Then we're then we're assured then we're assured that everything is going to be done properly.
Okay, but if it's a small project, a $10,000 security deposit might be a little tough for some people. I don't disagree. It should be a security deposit, and I'm concerned on small projects that we don't get a security deposit. And they, as Carl says, they the end, there's a couple of trees to be planted or a small fence to be put up worth three or $400, and he'll say, oh, forget it.
Yeah, I think Karen's point was that the threshold may be too high. And I tend to agree. It doesn't have to be that high for a lot of jobs.
I would agree too, and that's why I'm suggesting a percentage.
I propose we just let staff bring something back from what some of the other municipalities have to give us some some suggestions.
I think that I think that's a very good idea that I think, Carl, you've heard many comments from us now, and I think if you could come back to us with this report again.
Certainly.
So should we? Does that mean then we should just defer this this motion?
Yeah.
Joanna, I'll just ask you then, should we just defer this motion?
Uh, no, you're directing staff prepare a securities policy. So
Okay.
to prepare it, and then we still have to bring it before you.
Yes, and it still has to come back to council anyways.
Yep.
Okay, so anything else on this then? Seeing no other questions and comments. Um, I have a motion moved by Ian Straight and seconded by Klaus Vandemere, that committee, the whole, receive the securities policy report, and that the following be recommended to council, that staff be directed to prepare a security policy to guide the collection and administration of performance securities accompanying the site plan approvals. All in favor? That's Carrie. Thank you for this, Carl. And we'll await the report to come back.
Thank you.
Okay, and I think is that I think that's everything on the agenda for you, is it, Carl? I believe.
I I believe it is. Is there? I'll I'll ask, I'll turn to Joanna's. Is there anything else that that I might be needed for this evening?
Uh, no, I think you're good to go.
I guess the only thing is that we we really need to give you a lot of good luck for your Maple Leafs this year.
Off to a good start. I'll take the start we have.
Okay, thanks for everything, Carl.
Thanks. Good night.
Good night, then. Now, we're going, we're we're going to go on to our public works manager, Steve, who we we really haven't found out who he likes in hockey, but maybe someday we will.
To be the senators.
Oh, really? There we go. We got some competition going here. Okay, so we're going so we're going to go to the the Alan Maloney Alan Maloney report, and that's going to be yours, Steve.
Yes, thank you, Reeve. Counsel. Yeah, so as you can see, council directed staff to develop a report on Alan Maloney. I'm probably more familiar now with Alan Maloney than I am any other road in the municipality starting out. So as you can see through majority of my report, it goes into detail about a lot of upgrading. And that's kind of how it starts at a previous step is essentially we have severed lots on Alan Maloney Drive. And Joanna got some items from the county. And after reading through it, it does say in severance that these are on a maintained road roadway, which does in fact state that that is year round maintenance, snow plowing, etc. And I I was in contact with some residents that own property along there, and they're not asking for the roadways to be plowed at every inch of snow. They just like it done a few times a year, and you also there is access for emergency vehicles to get through, which I do agree with. And it is in the severance that it was a maintained roadway, and the municipality signed off on it. So my biggest thing was just about a turnaround area at the end of it. There is right now with obviously the ground being hard, and it seemed to be when I went and looked at it that there was a turnaround area at the end, about 1.2 kilometers in, which would allow for, you know, fire trucks plows are greater to turn around in there. It's not a not a small area by any means. It is quite sufficient. Um, I would, I would recommend that we do put some more gravel there and just update it because there is vegetation that has been growing in that area, and there is not a lot of traffic in there. I've talked into our lead hand. His one worry was about snow plowing. It is about the garbage issue. It's one of our higher areas where there is garbage being dumped. That that is a problem. But again, the safety of our residents that we agreed to maintain that road is another item, and I think it is imperative that we do maybe plow it out a couple of times to just keep that safety open. Throughout the rest of my report, it basically goes on about what we have to do and bring that up as standard. I mean, I think we can all agree that the road is very narrow. Has lots of growth on it, and it more or less details my information onto the next report about classification. I think it almost is an asterisk that we will maintain the roadway for plowing operations is obviously not going to be done before, say, Roswell Road North, but we we definitely need to open that up as as they agreed in their severance package. Um, I can go through more into the report about background of my my findings on that, but I just want to provide as much information as I could to council on Alan Maloney Drive, and if there's any questions, I'll have to answer them.
Uh, yes, Klaus?
Thank you, Reeve. Actually, a report, Steve, lots of good information in there, and that, well, thank you for all that work. You made a comment that it's possible, maybe just to put a bit of gravel to make the turnaround a little bit easier and so forth. And I do like that suggestion. I think as a temporary solution, we should make it easier for you to turn around. I know there are lots that are severed, but nothing has been sold there yet. So until things start to kind of move there, I don't think we should do anything more than just make that turnaround a little more possible with some gravel and maybe a little bit of widening. As far as the garbage situation, I know that's been a problem. People just go down that road and dump and run away. And I and I want to make a suggestion. I hate to make this suggestion. Is there some way that we could go through that garbage and find out if there's a name or an address or an envelope of some sort? And I've done this before in my other work that I do and find out who is dumping garbage on that road. I don't know. That's that's just an outside comment, but I like your suggestion of maybe just make the turnaround possible to make it a little easier to turn around. I mean, for years, they have been turning around in there going back and forth, and I'm sure there's many other roads that they do the same thing. Thank you.
Jeff?
But this is a tricky one because, I mean, this is a road that has no houses on it, and I and I completely understand where the the landowners are coming from. I took a drive. I remember when this first came out in spring, and I didn't make it to the roundabout because then I was in my truck. I hit a spurt certain spot before I would get to the roundabout that it was basically all mushed out and done. It was a mud pit, and I don't my truck would not have even four wheel drive would not have made it through that. So I mean, there's a it may be frozen now. I'd be afraid even someday, and I'm wondering if that's maybe one of the reasons why it got it was the maintenance started to drop off on it. I mean, if 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 the cloud truck goes through there when the ground starts to soften up, I could see it getting stuck in there. Um, on the other side of it, I mean, it's it's 100 and like so what like, I mean, and Steve, it's a great, great report, 100%. The the big thing is the $155,000. It's not a small chunk of money or a load of gravel to bring it up or to fix the road. So this is a huge commitment that if we want to go forward to looking this, and I can have a hard time, and I and I like to use the code road example because I find that's a narrow road that's got a block of houses on it. I have a hard time going to those people saying we're going to put $150,000 into a road with no residences on it. Landowners, and I completely respect those landowners. Those other 70, 80 houses that are on code drive, I mean, like, they 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 deserve a a road that's in better shape. So I think we're kind of finding a road to go and fix when we have many roads that are right on our front plate that are demanding more resources resources than we're more resources than we're available to. So, it's a slippery slope going down this direction. Uh, to look at that road, and the other side, I think the garbage side, if we plow that road in the wintertime, it just makes it more accessible for people to drive down there and dump garbage. So, I mean, I, I don't really know. Anyway, that's, that's my, my, my thought, right? I mean, I, I completely understand and respect where, where those home, that those landowners are coming from. I understand there's a couple of lots on there, we will never recover remotely. If we, if we, if we open that up and we start, uh, we start pouring gravel to try to maintain that road. And that's an initial cost, I mean, that does include every four years laying down more gravel, uh, what, $15,000 of the gravel every four years to as well to keep the maintenance going? Um, so I mean, it, it's, it's, it's tricky, because this is a big chunk of money for, you know, and, and we have to face you know, the other 3,900 people, almost 4,000 people in our, in our, in our township, that are living on roads that are saying we have a lot of houses on our roads you're not fixing, so anyway, that's my thought process, it's, uh, this is a, this is a big one, a big chunk of money, guys.
So, I, I am, I, I totally understand what you're pointing out, Jeff. Um, but as Steve has already said, for now, the landowners are interested in being able to feel safe enough by plowing it to a certain level uh, during the winter. Uh, we did plow it, I think, up until about five years ago. And so, and, and I, I think it was a great report, Steve. It gives us a lot of details, but we're, we, councils can look at this report into the future, whether it be five years, or 10 years, or 20 years. We now know, and we asked you to do it, and I think you did a great job, we asked you to bring this report. And now we've got all the facts in front of us. So that, that's very, very good. So nobody is looking at going much further than the snow plowing for now, and the possibility of making that uh, that turnaround, turnabout, a little bit bigger, which will be minimal cost. And if there's a pothole or like a, a, an area that you're talking about, Jeff, that, that might need some gravel. But just two or three comments I'd like to make. Back, a little history that a lot of people don't understand and don't even realize that back in the 1990s. Uh, the people who traveled that road and, and others decided that they, we should have a crossing, crossing lights where the railway crosses uh, boundary road. So Hydro brought the Hy, the Hydro up to the crossing so they could have lights. But the people who lived in that area helped to pay to bring the Hydro to that point, so there would be lights. At the same time, Hydro also made an agreement with the local people to put some Hydra poles in on El Maloney, El Maloney Road. There are, uh, poles on El Maloney Road right now that were put in in the 90s. There is also a privately owned privately owned and paid for Hydra line in there. And it's paid for by the people, private. But I know that it needs to have some maintenance work done by an arborist to clear that Hydra line. And so usually that work, where it is, has to be done in the winter. And again, that sort of goes back to the wishes of it being plowed. Uh, to be able to get people in there. And I guess I also just want to say, in the report, I read that there wasn't a lot of information on, on, on when it was, when, when it was last gravelled. But the, the lo, the local people tell me that it was actually three years ago that we put gravel there. So I just want to make that comment. And secondly, I also know from having talked to several people on that road or in that area, that there's a lot more activity in terms of people using, using the land in there for recreation. So the owners using it for recreation, using it for agricultural purposes by cutting wood and doing agricultural work like baling, baling hay in the summer. So it is being used a lot more now than it had ever been. And I'm also aware of the possibility of more severances. And, and an opportunity to do actually grow that area. I like the idea of at least looking at it in the future. Uh, because it is a growth area that is close to the Ottawa boundary. And, um, you know, I, I like the idea of sort of spreading our, our growth. Although right now, we look at the seven different um, settlement areas, I, I think to be able to have a little bit more growth near the Ottawa border is, is, is very good. The only other thing I'd like to mention, and more, it's a question, and that is that um, because of the lots being severed and, um, the possibility of those people wanting to build. Um, and because the lots were severed, which ties into why we should be maintaining it to a certain level. Should that classification for this road then be changed to a six? Or less? That's just a question for you, Stephen.
I feel like that, uh, it will be kind of the next report there, Reeve.
Okay. Yes, okay, no, that, that, that's fine. But I, I just want to reiterate, like, right now, I, I think it's, uh, the, the people who brought this forward in the first place. And I think that's why we started talking about it, is mainly interested in, in, in some, in, in winter, in some winter plowing when we have a, a deeper snowfall. Uh, and, uh, and as far as further maintenance or further work, uh, I think that's up to councils in the future, and I don't think anybody's looking at the near future. Uh, we're looking further on. And I like the idea of us, if we need to make the road, the turnaround a little bit bigger. I like the idea of spending a little bit of money to do that, especially to make it safe for anybody that's in there, working or uh, at leisure, and whether it be the plow, the grader, or the fire truck. Uh, we need to keep it safe. And back to your point, Jeff, about the low spot there. I think that, I think that, uh, our public works will probably look at that. So thanks for all of the, we, all of the remarks and comments. If there's, is there anything else then, Jeff? Thanks.
I, I, I just want to sort of come back a little bit ago, because I, I understand where you're coming from, and I understand that the, the lots are on there. I do wonder if there, there is no houses on, on that road?
Yeah, there's no houses at the moment on that road, there's talk of being houses.
There's talk, but there, 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 there's no, there's no, sorry Karen, I'm sorry.
When I did the, um, Google Maps to do a view, you can see a structure there, though. So there is something on one of those lots.
It might be a shed.
A shed of some kind.
I think, I think we could check it on the taxes for a future, but I don't know whether it's called like, um, hmm, a seasonal dwelling? So, there is, there is something there, though.
Okay, um, Steve?
I believe there might be a season, like a seasonal, like Karen's saying. It's maybe a little small hunt camp cabin kind of thing, I've heard from residents. I haven't confirmed yet, but it's definitely something we can look into, see what, what the status is.
And, and just to your point, Jeff, um, I, I know that we have, we do have, uh, we do have and we, we have had some roads where there could only be maybe one house on the road or two houses on the road. Uh, yes, Karen?
So that's a question I have, since people have obtained a severance. Could those people that own the land right now come in and get a building permit to build a, a house or on those lots?
Yes, Steve?
Uh, Joanna, I've kind of, we've discussed this, and we've reached, we've reached out for kind of legal advice on what the status is to get a concrete answer on that. To see kind of what's going on.
Claus?
Uh, well, to Karen's point, if they've got a severed lot, and they're registered, and there's 911 numbers on them. I saw the reason why they can't apply for a building permit and build on there. And I mean, there are lots being sold in Montague, and you'd be amazed at some of the prices that are going for these lots.
Hey, Jeff?
And, and it's another of those things where, like, I mean, we talked about this where, uh, we, and not to contradict, uh, you, Reeve. But we don't want to have that, that spread out and everywhere sort of building. We want to make sure, we, we want to control it a little bit in this sense, so it's the most economical for the township. I think that's the biggest thing, is that if we do, if we're, if we're not careful and, and we, and we allow those to happen. I want landowners to have as much rights as possible, but in the same token, it can't be at the detriment where it's going to cost the rest of the residences more money. So I got to raise taxes for everybody, because we're allowing those type of developments that's making it more costly for us to do things. And now it, it's, it's, there's a, there's a cost negative to that. So I think, and that's, that's the danger behind that. Finding these, not say finding these roads, but these roads, uh, you know, that, that don't necessarily have a lot of residences on it. Uh, and once again, I go back to that, that mosh pit, I mean, like, what's, what's a little bit of money of, of, of the gravel and fixing that up and brushing that in? That little bit of money can turn into $50,000 or $60,000 pretty quickly too as well. So I mean, it's a, uh, you know, and then the, and then the snow plowing on top of it. I mean, it's, it's, I completely respect what the, the landowners are looking for and everything else. Uh, and I respect, uh, what landowners, their, their right for their land. Um, but we have to be very conscious of the whole township and, and looking at what's the best cost benefit for our, our entire residents. Uh, and I don't really see how this is a huge cost, and there's no recoverable from this whatsoever. This is a complete loss right down the pipe.
Yeah, I, I
That, that, that's why, like, it's, 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 and, and if we open this can of worms, what other can of worms are we opening?
Uh, I totally understand what you're saying, and but I think I go back to my very first point. Uh, that if you want to call it the, a can of worms, call it that or call it precedent. That happened 20 years ago when these people were given severances. And they were given severances, they were given severances to be able to future build a house. And we have not maintained the road. They were given the, they were given the, the severances. And as I go back to my other statement, we have, we have had, and we still have some roads with very, very few people living on them. These people have a right, they were given the severances, they were given the severances as a future it, it for, so that in the future, they could build a house on their severance. And that, that's, that's where, that's where it all started. So any other comments? Claus?
How many severances are, were given on this road then? Do we know?
Well, I, I know of one family that has two at least, so. And this happened many years ago.
I was contacted by five properties owners.
And yes, and, and, and I have been, I have also been contacted with, by five or six. And it's not just the, um, the ones that have already been severed, but there certainly is about other several other severances. And so, any, anyway, so I'll, I'll just leave it at that. Um, Ian?
Yeah, I understand where Councilor Carol's coming from at one point, and I also understand where you're coming from as well, Reeve. And I guess it comes down to, you know, people before us made the decision to allow severances on a piece of property on a road that that, uh, you know, I guess the severance says it was going to be maintained. And since those severances were done, unfortunately, the maintenance hasn't been done on them. And now all of a sudden, you're looking at a large sum of money to bring it up to speed to where it should have been, or where it could be, or should be, or whatever it might be at the end of the day. And, uh, you know, we're kind of tasked with that, uh, that dilemma right now of, of what do you do, or what do you have to do? And, um, you know, it may seem a little bit tough, but, uh, you know, the people that were here before us, you know, made those decisions and they allowed for it to go, but it's just unfortunate they didn't do the maintenance on the road at the same time they allowed for the severance. Um, to keep it up to a, a, a normal, a usable level, I guess. Um, and now all of a sudden, nothing's really been done, other than, I know my first term of council, we put gravel on it. Um, and other than that, um, I don't think very, very little or nothing's been done. And now, and now there's a big bill staring you in the face, and it's made us all wonder if, you know, what it is you have to do. Then we have to honor what the people prior to us have, have, had committed to. And, and doing what's right for the people who spent money having severances done.
I, I guess on the plus side, though, is that there's no bill staring us, uh, as right now.
No.
Nobody's asking for any money to be spent right now, except to allow people to get in there in, when there's a heavy snowfall. I think, Joanna, you had your hand up.
I was just going to say, I believe so, last number of severances. Um, I don't know of any that are currently have been applied for, I did speak to the county about that. So we don't have, you guys keep mentioning that there are severances in play, there are none that have been applied for. That's not to say they're not being discussed or thought about, but certainly the county has not received any applications, nor has the municipality at this point. Um, there was, what we could find, one severance, I believe it was from 93, Steve. I believe that was it. And I think it was two severances and one retained lot, um, that were permitted. I didn't honestly take a, a, a great big look at the file, I just got them and forwarded it to Steve for his information. Um, but that's, that's what we're talking about. Now, there may, there are probably other properties that are existing, but in terms of severances, I believe there is two or three.
Claus?
Thank you, Reeve. And on Councilor Straight's point, I mean, it was years ago the decision was made to get, give severances. Uh, so we have the responsibility to follow through, and I come back to what I said before, for Public Works to start small and do the minimal amount that needs to be required to make the turnaround a bit better. And if you need to fill in some massive potholes for safety, and let's start small and see where we go from there. And hopefully maybe lots will get sold there, and things will happen.
Hey, Joanna, Eileen, Joanna?
Um, so I just wanted to point out, um, right now that Steve's report is for information only. And I believe there was a question asked, uh, of Stephen, we mentioned that we're looking for, um, sort of some legal guidance, um, with respect to the houses. So I don't want to suggest, you know, that's something to do here, but it, it might make sense until we get more information. We, we could just receive this information, get some further information and report back. Or else if you want to provide this direction or guidance in a different way.
Well, it, it's kind of timely, what, what we're talking about is kind of timely. So I, I would, I would hope that we could give you staff direction to at least deal with the minimum request which is at hand right now. Um, do we do, like, do we, would we give you that staff, that direction now? Yes, okay, Jeff? I see your hand, Jeff.
Steve, just real quick, like, right now, are you comfortable setting a plow truck down there to plow it right now with the way the road condition is and turn around and come back? Or are we talking?
Having, having the three. Yeah, having the three done definitely helps. Um, it's, it's might not be a great plow this year, right? We've had quite a bit of snow here, and it's got cold past couple of days. So i- it's going to be tough to get in and cut it right down. Um, it's frozen, the ground is pretty frozen that, that we can, and there is no problem. I mean, five years ago, I think, I believe is when it was last plowed, and it did turn around in the end. It can be done. Yeah, it can be done.
Okay, so is there staff direction then to do this? Um, Claus?
Yeah, I would say we give staff direction to do a minimal service there of keeping it plowed when there's heavy snowfalls.
Okay, so I'm just going to get consensus about the, for this then, Joanna. Uh, we have, I've heard from you, uh, Claus, I'm going to go around the table then, uh, Karen?
Yes, minimal.
Okay, uh, Jeff? Sorry, Jeff? Jeff, are you muted?
Yeah, no, I said no.
Sorry, Jeff, we, we, we can't hear you.
Anybody else hear me?
Yes, slightly.
Everybody else hear me, Bill?
Um.
I said no.
Okay, uh, Ian?
Yeah, minimal.
Okay, and, uh, yes, from me. So, uh, the sta- that's the staff direction for now then, uh, uh, Steve and Joanna. And I do have the motion here that was moved by Claus Vandermeer and seconded by Ian Straight, that the council of the whole receive the following report. The Public Works Manager, uh, Road Classification Bylaw, Class Six Roads. And is that the correct one?
No.
Yes?
No.
You're, you're on the wrong one.
Sorry, sorry, moved by Jeff Carroll, seconded by Karen Jennings, that the committee of the whole receive the El Maloney Report. And that the following be recommended to council, that count, committee of the whole receive the Ellen Monroe, Maloney Road Upgrade Report for information only. All in favor?
Well, no. Question?
Yes, question?
Would we not add then that staff would follow the direction of council to do minimal maintenance?
Yes, I think so. So, so will you, can you add that, uh, Joanna? To another one and then I'll sign that one?
Yep, I have that written down.
Okay, thank you for that, Karen. And back to Jeff.
Sorry, that be, is that, can that be a separate one?
Yeah, it will be separate.
Like, like, so we're gonna, we're gonna, like, I, I have no problem taking this as, as a, uh, this report as, as for information. I mean, obviously, but, but I, 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 I do have, I mean, I like it separate for the, for the fact that we're, we're looking at, uh, starting to spend money on that road. So I, I want that separated, uh, away from that.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I think I agree there, um. Jeff, I think I agree that thi- this, this motion is just re- accepting this report for information. We've already gone around the table and got consensus uh, for the minimum, uh, for now on El Maloney. I, I think it's two separate issues. Am I, is that okay? Is that okay? And then Karen, you?
Yep, as long as it gets noted that we will do it, yep.
Yeah, well, it'll be noted because it's in, it, it, we just, we just got, it will be noted because we just got, uh, consensus there.
Okay.
Joanna, Joanna, did you have something to add here before I read this again?
I just didn't know we, if we had a move by and a seconded by.
And we did. No, that, that was just a staff direction. If you, if you think, if you think we need that as a separate motion, we can do that.
I think we should.
I would prefer it.
Okay, then I'm going to go back to, uh, I think Claus, you opened it up there and, uh, and started it off. Do you want to remove that or anybody else?
Yes, I'll, as a separate motion, we do minimal maintenance of, uh, snow plowing.
Okay, maybe, ma- maybe just, sorry, I'm just going to go back to you, but I'm going to ask council to vote for this other motion first that I read. It is just to receive this other re- other report for information. So all in favor of that? Okay, that one's carried and I'll go back to you then, uh, Claus, if you can, uh, make this motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that, uh, Public Works maintain El Maloney Road for snow plowing to a very, a minimum. And, uh, leave it to discretion of the Public Works Manager on any maintenance minimal that is required on the road.
Hey, do I have a second there?
Minim- minimal.
The maintenance, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Little snow power.
Just snow plow, all right.
Minimal snow.
Snow power. Okay, so it's, then it's, we're just talking about for now, we're just talking about, uh, uh, staff direction to, uh, apply, uh, minimum plowing. Period. Okay, so that's been moved and seconded by?
So nothing but snow plowing?
Nothing but snow plowing.
For now.
And, and what's, what, what is the, not to be stickler here, but I really, like, I, I, but what is, what is the are we going to talk about a certain amount of snow? Because I know we have that for, for our roads, right, Steve? So are we talking, if there's twenty centimeters of snow, that's when we'll go down there?
Well. Hey? Steve?
I'm not going to suggest, but I would say that we could cover that in our minimum maintenance, uh, uh, Road Classification Bylaw on an actual, uh, measurement of when we're going to snow plow that. Um, if, if that's agreeable.
I, 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 I think we, I think we also have.
In the next report, uh, Council Carroll, it, uh, lays out depths. So I believe we could go ahead and put an asterisk on El Maloney Road. I, I'll cover that in a sec, but, uh, that, at a certain depth, it will get plowed to the, and plowing only.
The six B kind of idea, because I know that's how you're saying that, right? Sorry, Reeve, but just that, because I know what, like, that's exactly it. So like, we would kind of classify it for snow plowing at that six B category where, and that, when it hits that. I'm trying to find a consensus with, with, with this, with, with our, with our councils. So I mean, I, I mean, I undo the rigging for, for the people, but I want to make sure that, you know.
So, uh, I also back to you, Steve, or back to council, I think first. I, I, I really think we also have to be able to give, in this motion that has been moved and seconded, I think it was moved by Claus and seconded by Karen, I do think that we have to be able to add that if Public Works has to do anything with the turnaround to make it safe, I think they have to be able to go ahead and be able to do that. I think it makes sense to give them that ability.
Well, from a safety point, yeah.
Well, I don't think you're going to do much right now in the middle of winter, right? I don't think you're going to start putting gravel on, on, right at this point in time. So what's, there's what there, it has to make do. And if Stephen says, I'm going to get down there with the plow truck, then we can get down there with the plow truck. But I don't want to start dumping loads of gravel down there at this present second.
Yeah, no, I, I was just, I was just thinking if there was, simply if there's a, a tree that has to be cut down to make it a little bit easier or whatever, that's all I was thinking about. Okay, so we do have this motion moved by Claus and seconded by Karen. Uh, if there's no further comments and questions, then I'm going to ask for the vote, all in favor. Opposed? That's carried. Okay, thank you for that one, Steve. And then we're going to move on to the next one is D, uh, that's the Road Classification Report.
Yeah, thanks, Reeve. Um, so yeah, council directed staff to bring back forward informa- or information relating to six B and six C, Karen, sorry.
Uh, this is the one I think.
So, sorry, Steve, I'm just sorry for interrupting you there. But Claus, you were going to remind me, but I'm going to remind you.
That's exactly.
Yes. I, I got the form filled out. I'll mute myself. Goodbye.
Okay, thank you. Back to you, Steve.
Yeah, so information relating to six B and six C roads, um, I kind of went over everything as a whole, um, took everything into consideration. Um, and as you can tell by the graphs on this, uh, report, there's about fifty percent of our roads are six, class six roads, which aren't governed by the minimum maintenance standard. So it's very important for us to get a detailed list on, you know, our six, six B and six Cs and ensure adequate standard for each of these roads. As you can see, there's quite a big variance in, uh, traffic, daily traffic on all these roads. And, uh, so what I based these on is um, the annual aver- average daily traffic from the roads in East City. And the other critical one is existing roadway conditions. So that's roadway width, sightlines and drainage, which is, as we all know, very critical to, uh, all these. So it lays out, uh, class six roads are class six itself, technically six A is, will be, um, maintained as a class five, and that's all in the minimum maintenance standards. And I want to note that our roads crew, um, lead handle, they do phenomenal job and we are well above all these minimum maintenance standards and they do a phenomenal job making sure that we're well above the, uh, minimum. That's all. Um, and then the six B roads, so they'll be maintained on a year-round basis, but they have a bit of a, a time added on to what the class five has. So this allows us, in the case of COVID, where we're talking about, you know, we can't get around every road if there was a shortage, it allows us that much extra little bit of time to get to these roads. Not saying that they're not as important as the class six roads, but it just gives us a little bit more time to get to these roads. They're, you know, far less traveled than our arterial roads, the collector roads, and, uh, majority of these six Bs are dead-end roadways. Um, the next ones are the six C roadways. Um, these are maintained on a seasonal basis, which would be, you know, first snowfall till the halfload restrictions come off, there would be no maintenance done on these, um, throughout the summer season, you know, you have routine grading. Um, and then we're doing our checkups on it for potholes and everything like that. So this would be where the, uh, El Maloney Road would come into effect where due to how narrow it is, it is classed as six C road. But there would be an asterisk on El Maloney Road that I would add into this, where there, it would receive minimum snow plowing operations out of depth according to six B roadways. So that would be after four inches, ten centimeters of snow, we will plow that. Once we get our six and six B roadways done, we will then go to El Maloney Road and do it. Um, and then I get into kind of a little bit of maintenance stuff that we have done, um, on Matt's and Drive, the section, if everybody's familiar, it's just beyond the last blue pin, uh, heading towards a quarry. Um, it is used by our fire department for a water source. Um, I talked to the fire chief on this and he said it's not something that he'll be using during the winter seasons. There's more of, uh, for wildland fires and just having a water source in there. So he has no objections to not having that plowed beyond the last house. Um, and, and staff lead hand told me we've done a little bit of brushing in there, but there has been no grading operations beyond the last house. Uh, Lawrence Street, that was noted as per, uh, the meeting on June second, that no additional, no maintenance would be completed. Um, and then El Maloney Road, um, the lead hand, he advised that in his five years here, he has not completed the snow plowing operations. And I just have a little bit of notes on what has been completed, um, and it is a minimal cost to, you know, have one plow go down. And then the important part of the bottom is the previous one that went to council would not allow six B roadways to have building permits issued. I feel that we shouldn't limit ourselves on where building permits can go. I would put this onto the six C. But six Bs, we are still adequate roadways, they're just less traveled and we're just trying to come up with a classification system. So I would allow building permits on a six B roadway as per this layout. And then six Cs, as we discussed with El Maloney, there wouldn't, until we sink that money into it that allow us to widen it, make it a proper roadway with width, drainage and everything like turner, proper turnaround, it would be classed as six C. But again, all of these can be changed at the discretion of council and when there's severances that come in, it can be changed by council's choice. Um, and then the recommendation would be to approve what I proposed. Um, option two would be to eliminate the six C and just go with six B and then the class six. And then the least recommended would be to treat all these roadways that are class six roadways as, uh, class six. It just, we're not, uh, by complete, doing this, I feel we are not providing the service to the overall public. Um, if all the roadways were up to par, it would be one thing to do this, but we have a lot of work to do on the roadways and we're just starting out getting, uh, majority of the roadways up, up to standard.
Um, I have a question, Steve. Did you say, or did somebody else say that, uh, we were, you were going to get some kind of legal advice uh, as far as, uh, building permits, um, on, um, the severed lots that have already been?
That's correct.
Okay, so that'll just come back, then you will bring that back to another report?
I can provide that, yes.
Yeah, because, I mean, it, it, it still will be an issue that we did, um, you know, that we, we did, uh, approve, years ago approved, uh, lots, uh, severed lots. And, um, so anyways, I'll just leave it at that. If we're going to get some legal advice first and it can come back to the next report.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, so I do have a motion, but I'll, I'll wait if there's any, uh, questions and comments. If not, uh, then I have a motion. It was moved by Claus Vandermeer and seconded by Ian Straight.
No, sorry.
I'm sorry, yes, Karen?
With Claus having to declare the conflict, we'll have to change that motion.
I'm, oh, yes, good for you. Thank you. Thank you, Karen. So, uh, would someone else like to move this motion?
Throw me.
Uh, yes, okay, so that's moved by Karen Jennings. Seconded by Ian Straight, that the committee of the whole receive the Road Classification Bylaw Report, Class Six Roads. And that the following be recommended to council, that council directs staff to place a final bylaw on the next council agenda for approval. Um, would, um, excuse me, Joanna, do you think we should, um, because we're going to be looking for some legal advice, which we may or may not have by the next council agenda? Should we reword that at a, at an upcoming council agenda?
Uh, that, I mean, I suspect we'll have it, but it's probably good just to be on the safe side and, and change that wording, yeah.
So can you, can you look after this one specifically and change that? And I'll have, I'll have to, uh, I'll have to sign that one separately then?
Yep.
It's simply to read that council directs staff to place a final bylaw on the neck, on an upcoming council agenda for approval?
Yep.
Okay, um, all in favor? That's carried. Uh, did I lose Claus? Claus? Oh, yes, that's right now. We did lose Claus. So Claus, can we, uh, let him know that he can come back now? Somehow? Um, I, how do we let, how do we, how can we let Claus know there?
I'll call him.
Well, thank you.
He's back. He's unmuted himself.
Okay. Thanks, Karen. And Claus, you can hear us now?
Yeah, just a sec.
That's okay.
You see me?
Yeah.
Yep.
You hear me?
Yeah, thanks, Claus. Okay, then moving on. Yeah, moving on, uh, to our next report, uh, also yours, Steve, and that's on the specifications for tender for the Baco.
Thanks, Reeve. So a motion was put forward by council to accelerate the purchase of a Baco. So Public Works Manager, uh, I reached out to the other Public Works Manager to see what, uh, other maintenance files were using. I got a lot of feedback, uh, good, bad. Um, and then I thought it was imperative that we include our staff on this decision to kind of get their input on their dislike or likes and dislikes. So we had a demonstration day. Um, it was a great day. Guys got hands-on with a variety of different machines. And, uh, again, we saw a lot of our likes and dislikes on it. And, uh, and then we came up with a list of the specs that I provided. I think they're, on the last item of the specs, under warranty, it should say eight thousand, not eight hundred on the hours. That was one, uh, one thing I caught there, but other than that, these are the specs and it's kind of taken what we anticipate we will require for the township of Montague, and this is the Baco.
Thank you, and, uh, I think you did a great job by, uh, including our staff. That, what a, what a good idea. So that, kudos to you, Steve. Opened up to council, any questions and comments? If not, I have a motion here was moved by Karen. Yeah, sorry, Jeff, did you have a question? Jeff?
I was just gonna say another, uh, is it another spot on? I mean, going through all of the, I think you hit every point on that, what, what a, the Baco was needed by. So I mean, it's another bang on. We know we're getting the right thing and we're, and very, very detailed. So well done again. Thank you, Steve.
I, I don't, I, I don't think I ever realized that there were so many things that you would have to look at to buy a Baco. Okay, thank you. Uh, we have. Okay, thank you. We have a motion moved by clause. Did you have a question first?
Sorry, yeah, just a quick question, Steve. This is the technical thing. This backhoe, does it do what's called regeneration?
Please, so I'm not a hundred percent on that.
Okay, maybe Ian knows what I mean by regeneration. They work great, but they can be a pain sometimes. You gotta really know what to do.
Okay.
They all have that, Steve.
Yes, Ian?
Steve, when you're going out doing the tours to get them, were they readily available? I know that some of the equipment is starting to get pretty scarce right now and things are getting bought up pretty quick.
Yeah, good, great question, counselor. So it, we went to three different suppliers and from one, he asked if I had a check to sign if we could take it right then. And then the next one said it was a couple of months away. So it is, you know, it depending who we end up having a successful bid. I'm hoping it's going to be quick, but it's, like you say, it's some manufacturers are pretty scarce right now.
Okay, then thank you for that. And then I have a motion moved by Karen Jennings, seconded by Jeff Carroll. That the committee of the whole receive the 2021 four wheel drive backhoe report. That's the load, backhoe loader tender specifications report. And that the following be recommended to council, that council authorize staff to proceed with a request for tender for a 2021 four by four backhoe with specifically outlined specifications. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you, Steve, for that one. And moving on then, the next report is yours, treasure, Andrew Hodge, the surplus to reserve report.
Thank you. So I have here the surplus to reserve, transfer to reserves report. And the recommendation is the council authorized staff to transfer any surplus from township operations for 2020 to the capital reserves. And the council authorized staff to transfer any surplus from water and sewer operations for 2020 to a water and sewer operating reserve. So this is an annual report. It's done the same as the previous year. It authorizes the intent for the transfers to happen. The actual dollar amounts, it will come in a report later on after the year end audits being completed. And this report is done, like I said, to authorize the transfer to take place when the time of the audit is completed.
Okay, any questions? Seeing none, I have a motion moved by Ian Straight, seconded by Claus Vandemere, that the committee of the whole receive the following report. That's the surplus to reserves report and that the following be recommended to council, that council authorized staff to transfer any surplus from township operations for 2020 to the capital reserves. And that council authorized staff to transfer any surplus from water sewer operations for 2020 to a water sewer operating reserve. All, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Just remember, just again, it's just thought, Joanna, I'll just mention on that last, on that last motion, you can, if you can make this correction or, well, I think I can just make it here, but clause's last name was spelt wrong there. I just noticed it. So if we can just change that, please.
Oh. Wouldn't be the first time.
Yeah, okay, thanks. Then moving on to the next report. We do have, so we have these motions separate, so we'll keep them separate. Sometimes we put them all together. But the next one is the, is also yours. Tred to Andrew, do you have anything you wanted to report on this surplus to reserves report? So, sorry, that's, that was the one there.
I would say.
Yes.
Not on the surplus to reserves.
Okay, so, yeah, so the next one is.
On the, on the over, is that the one you're asking?
Yeah, the fourth quarter overtime report.
Yes, I guess just essentially, it's the fourth quarter report. It adds, carries on from the third quarter. In the fourth quarter, the overtime as a total is less than the previous year. And for the whole year, 2020 as a whole, it's also decreased.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, did you, sorry, did you have anything else?
No, that's everything.
Okay, thank you then. I do have a motion moved by Jeff Carroll and seconded by Karen Jennings, that the committee of the whole receive the 2024 quarter report on staff overtime. And that the following be recommended to council, that we receive this report as information. All in favor? That one is carried. The next one is the fourth quarter fire report. I'll read the motion and if you have any questions, this one was moved by Claus Vandemere, seconded by Ian Straight, that the committee of the whole receive the following report. The fire chiefs report 2024 quarter report, fire report, and that the following be recommended to council, that council receive this report for information. Seeing no questions, comments, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you. The next one is the MLEO report, the fourth quarter report, and I have a motion, it was moved by Ian, by Karen Jennings, seconded by Jeff Carroll, that the committee of the whole receive the following report, the 2024 quarter bylaw animal control report, and that the following be recommended to council, that we receive this report as information. Seeing no hand, yes, Karen?
Just curious about the miscellaneous questions and complaints. Twenty-one, that's a large, just what specifically questions, like type thing to be noted as?
Yeah, and I, I think maybe as I recall, that question came up once before, possibly by yourself.
Yep.
And so Joanna, would you pass this message on? And then maybe send back the answer to all of us? Please? Thank you. Clause?
Yeah, I'll not note to, to COVID complaints. What would those be?
To which?
COVID complaints. COVID complaint.
I imagine it was people gathering, somebody gathering in groups or something.
Okay, alright.
Okay. Seeing no other further hands, I did read the motion. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. And the next one is the fourth quarter report of Mr. Hunter. I have a motion, it was moved by Ian Straight, seconded by Claus Vandemere, that the committee of the whole receive the 2024 quarter building report. And that the following be recommended to council, that council receive this report for information. I don't see, yes, Jeff?
Just to make a comment on the, on the new home, the new home builds, I mean, I think we all saw that number, we're all aware of it. It's, you know, it's, it's the, this, the COVID year was the most new home starts and then the previous five years. And I don't think that's going to be an anomaly. So I think it's good that we're moving forward with a lot of what we're trying to do with our planning and everything else, because I think that's going to be starting to be more consistent number, as long as we have the lots to do it. So I think that just kind of goes well. It's a good conversation thinker about where our population is going, where that growth is going. And also making sure that we stay on top of the preparedness of the proper growth that we want to make sure that we're putting forward.
Yeah, you took the words out of my mouth, Jeff. Thank you, because really, when I read it, I thought, man, I don't remember seeing a much more positive report. Thank you, clause.
Yeah, I echo what Jeffrey Carroll just said too. It's fantastic. And I think I mentioned before, there was a lot that was sold in Montego Township last week for over ninety thousand dollars.
Yep.
That's unheard of. And that, so we're, we're in the driver's seat, heading towards building and moving forward, so.
Okay.
For sure, so it's.
We've been on the cusp for a long time. It's just, it's just been a matter of time, you know, and
Yeah.
cost a stone in the next township over and they've been selling lots over there for ninety thousand dollars for years. So it's just, it's bound to come our way. And as long as we manage the growth in a proper, proper manner and we tailor our official plan to allow for growth, then hopefully it keeps on coming.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're in a good driver's seat. Let's keep going.
Yeah, we just gotta do it right. And that's the, that's the biggest part is we have to do, sorry, but we, we have, I mean, and that's the biggest, the biggest pressure on this council and even the next council is going to be how we do this right and, and these tough decisions of the right financial moves to make sure that we're doing it in a profitable, the profitable way for our township too as well, so it benefits everybody.
Yeah.
As well, it's also, there's also a lot of, you know, we have, we have to make sure you do it right, so we don't end up costing residences more, actually are able to grow appropriately and then offer more services as we do that. I mean, that's going to be our mandate and our goal as we do this.
Okay, all good comments? I did read the, the motion, I believe. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. And the next one is the the fourth quarter water report. And that is moved by Jeff Carroll and seconded by Karen Jennings, that the committee of the whole receive the 2024 quarter water report. And that the following be recommended to council, that council receive this report as information. Seeing no questions, all in favor? That one is carried. Thank you. Moving on. We have no reports to committees, no petitions, motions, notices of motions, no unfinished another business. And before we adjourn, Joanna, I'll ask you if we have any questions from the public?
No questions for me.
From the public?
Yeah, from the public.
Okay, thank you then. I have a motion. It was moved by Claus Vandemere and seconded by Ian Straight, that the committee of the whole meeting do now adjourn at eight twenty-five. All in favor? And that is carried. So we will be reconvening our council meeting, but if we want, I think we need to take a couple of minutes break here. Is that okay? We'll take a two minute break and then we'll come right back and reconvene to our council meeting. Thank you.
Kristy, are you still there?
Yeah, yes, I'm here.
Do you, are you staying for the in camera or do you have to transfer it to?
I have to, yes. So once we come back, I will and you guys do your thing to go in camera, then I will transfer to her to be a host. And then I'm going to leave and then she's going to bring me back to put it back to YouTube. So I'll be hanging around at home, but not present in the meeting.
Yeah, that's fair. I, I, I mean, I figured you had it down pat, but I just wanted to double check. That's fantastic.
Yeah, we ran a test to see how it worked.
You, you got, you guys are awesome. Thanks. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You there, Jeff?
Here.
How's your online course directions going?
It's, it's going well. I mean, I mean, it is what it is, right? There's, there's, there's some penis to it, but it's, it's going pretty good.
My granddaughter's having a bit of a struggle with it.
Yeah, it's, it's not, I mean, the younger, the younger the kids are, the harder it is. And I have two here too as well, right? I mean, I'm trying to do my own with my wife do as well and we're, and then we're trying to do our online stuff too as well. And I mean, I, I mean, I have a grade one and a grade three. So I mean, like they, they need our help doing their work too as well. And everything else, it, it definitely is, you know, challenging. I mean, it is what it is, right? I mean, like we're, we're all dealing with it. I, you know, I and the, everybody is, the parents and teachers for what they're, what they're doing out there and trying to, and trying to make it work, you know, for as long as we, you know, have to do this. But it's not ideal. I mean, in, in the school and like everybody together and getting kids there and I mean, that's, we all know that that's what they need to be. It's just, I mean.
Yeah, it's gotta happen. I can't, like my granddaughter's problem is her one arm is kind of immobile right now. So she's having a hard time doing it with her left hand and a little bit with the right, right hand, you know?
Like the channel together.
That's, that's right. She gets very frustrated. When she was in class, like she had someone assigned to her as a scribe to do the writing for her, right? But now that's, that's gone, so. And I do think, I, I do think a lot of the parents are doing some of the assignments.
Parents want to help their kids, right? I mean, like, and, and we catch ourselves in the, in the classroom sometimes when we're like, you know, you want to say, no, no, you gotta do it like this. You know, we, we, I gotta make sure that you're, you're doing it. But again, and parents want to see their kid be successful. So I mean, it's, it's you don't like to watch your child struggle. So I mean, I, you know, we, it it's a new experience for so many people. So it's just, but I think people are doing fantastic considering what they're, what, you know.
Oh, yeah.
It's not gonna be perfect. We never knew it was gonna be perfect. We never had that.
Well, what my son's gonna do, he's gonna get a tutor to help her out a little bit.
Ian, are you with us, Ian?
Where'd you go, Ian? Oh, I think he's coming back.
I'm here.
And Joanna? Okay. So are we, are we live? Are we back live?
Yes, we're live.
We've always been live, yeah.
Yeah, okay. We probably, when we go between meetings, like when we've reconvened or before we reconvene, I think we should just, maybe, can we mute, mute everybody there? Think it's probably a good idea. Anyways, okay, we're going to, I do have a motion. It was moved by Claus Vandemere and seconded by Ian Straight, that council reconvene at eight thirty-three. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Then I have a motion moved by Karen Jennings and seconded by Jeff Carroll, that this council move in camera at eight thirty-four. As per S two thirty-nine of the municipal act S zero two thousand and one, C twenty-five, in order to address B litigation or potential, potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality or local board, more specifically potential litigation. And K a position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be, to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board. More specifically, inter-municipal agreements. All in favor? Thank you. That is carried. So can you let us know when we're in camera, Joanna?